Good evening, everyone. Today's Tuesday, April 18th, and this is the Nacusa School District's Board of Education Monthly Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here and those of you that are viewing via River City Community Access. Once again, as always, I'd like to thank Art for spending the evening with us and videotaping us, and also, happy anniversary, Art.
Well, happy anniversary, Art.
Fifty-three years, right?
Wow.
So, congratulations. Okay, Mr. Mahan, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
I am present.
Present. Okay, now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Mr. Rocheski, you have the virtue card for tonight.
Wisdom. Wisdom is the guardian of our choices. It helps us to discern the right path at the right moment. It gives us clarity of thought and deeper understanding. We use our best judgment, resisting the pull of impulse and desire. Wisdom gives us the maturity and patience to make sustainable decisions. We seek knowledge, enter reflection, and open ourselves to inspiration. We consider carefully, then act confidently. Wisdom takes us beyond thought to a deeper knowing. Wisdom grounds us in grace. I, wisdom, am a mistress of discretion, the inventor of lucidity of thought. Good advice and sound judgment belong to me, perception, strength. Practice of wisdom. I make discerning choices. I resist distracting impulses. I listen to my better judgment. I reflect before I act. I speak spiritual guidance. I trust my deepest truth. I'm thankful for the gift of wisdom. It is the messenger of my soul.
Thanks, Pat. And I'll read the School District of Nacusa Board of Education guidelines. We wrote these in December of 2015. There are four of them. The first one, "With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members." We'll also be respectful of time. Guideline number two, "We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities." Guideline number three, "We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement." And guideline number four, "We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics." So, those are our guidelines for the Board of Education. Next on the agenda, as always, we have public comments, and we always invite public comments. Yes?
I have a comment. Collected my comment here for you. Hello, school board members and everybody else present. My name is Beth Thomas. I'm here tonight because I have many concerns as a school district parent, but tonight I'm just going to focus on one. I'm a parent of four amazing boys. I've been involved in the schools for eight years and have about 20 more to go, so my investment in this district is real. My concerns are concerns shared by many. I've recently spoken with many parents of the district who have expressed to me that they'll be or are strongly considering moving their children to other districts and homeschooling, which is really sad and scary to me, people that I know. At the last school board meeting, recruitment and retention was addressed. I'd like to address that topic tonight. I believe that in many areas of life, we need to be proactive and not reactive. I know that's a process that we're working on. I feel that often, a lot of times, time is spent on recruitment. As Mr. Whitmore had mentioned last meeting, we should be looking into recruiting new, energetic, best-of-the-best teachers that are just graduating. But I see this as being reactive. If we do not focus time into retention, we can recruit all the energy we want, only for them to seek other opportunities after a brief time, excuse me, in our district. I see work on retention as being proactive. Let's build on the great things that we have. Let's listen to our great, experienced teachers. Let them mentor these new teachers. When we don't have the seasoned teachers, our new teachers have no guidance and no mentor. I have currently two children in CWSA, so my passion lies there, but I've also talked to many other teachers and parents of many other grades. The teachers are feeling micromanaged and unsupportive. We are living in a completely changed society from when all of us attended school, and the teachers are working hard to adjust and adapt to those changes. The teachers know, because they're in the classroom every day with these kids. They have focused their, they have chosen this field and continue to teach because they have a passion for it, not because they were forced into that position. I'm frustrated for my own kids and many others in the district. When the district builds a great program in an area, it seems we find a way to change our focus and lose sight of what the great thing we're working on is. I've watched CWSA change over the last three years, and I've watched it grow and gain momentum. I've watched these children blossom. One weekend, I looked outside my window to find my own children boiling swamp water and filtering it through a tablecloth to see if they can make it drinkable. They spent hours out there, not because they had to, not because anyone told them to, but because they're curious. They often do experiments at home. They now fix everything. After I've thrown it away, they pull it out and they fix it. They're gaining life skills. They've developed unremarkable problem-solving skills that they will carry through life. It was great to hear Mr. Rocheski's personal experience with these problem-solving skills because it goes way beyond chess and way beyond the classroom. I've watched these teachers devote their time and in many ways, their lives, to building this program and helping the kids succeed, but I fear that we're facing some changes in the teachers that will greatly impact the entire program. I work in an environment where we are not, when we are not busy, we look to downsize the staff and send people home to be on call to come back to work. But when we're overwhelmed and unable to handle that workload, we don't automatically increase our help. We work longer hours, tired and overwhelmed. I've watched the same process in the school. We're quick to move teachers in all grades when the numbers are down, but we're also quick to overwork the teachers when the numbers are high. Why not find a way to maintain a team? One year may be a great year for that team, and they may have a more manageable workload. And the next year, they may have to work a little bit harder, but all along, they maintain that team and they learn to work well together. They learn to better balance each other's workload. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Rocheski for investing so much time into the school and really getting to know my own children and all the children in the district. I also commend you on working closely with the teachers to understand their day-to-day challenges and victories. I'd also like to thank Mr. Geezy for his time at the schools, trying to better understand their structure that he's guiding, even when the carpet tried to get the best of you, stuck the day out. I ask you to really look at the positive things in this district and to continue to build on those rather than break them apart to fix other problem areas. I ask you to pursue ways to fix those areas that don't destroy a positive area of the district. I ask all of you, as the guidance of our district, to really get to know the district. As the boss of the system, please know and truly understand the system that you're guiding. All of our teachers can find a job in another district. Let's work to make this district the place they want to be. The place they tell future teachers is a great place to teach. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with all of you to make this district a place of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate your comments. Does anyone else have any public comments tonight?
Beth, can we have a copy of that? Please?
Or a copy of it?
Do you charge?
Yeah. No, I don't.
Well, Beth, you certainly bring up some challenges that the district goes through on a daily basis, and obviously, you're correct, recruitment and retention is really important to the district, on both sides. The planning part of it, leading up to recruitment, and then, obviously, the retention part of it, to keep strong staff members here and to keep the district running. So, and, you know, you also brought up some good points about changes and adapting to change as well, and that's really hard in every aspect of education. But I think it's really hard in every aspect of any kind of business that we see, but I think in education, it's really hard, maybe even harder than some businesses, because your clientele's always changing. My clientele is kind of the same. I know they change a little, but your clientele changes every year, and that's hard. But thank you for your comments. We appreciate it, and we'll certainly, we'll certainly review those and try to make good changes for the district. So, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments tonight that they want to make? Any public comments? No one? Okay, well, then we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is showcasing schools and student learning, which is part of our policy governance, and that falls under results policy number three. And Mr. Osterbrink, you're up first, and you're going to, you have a presentation with on the Chester School Forest Building Project?
Yes, so we want to present what we've come along and developed, some ideas that we've gone into. We have some cost analysis for the project, and, but we also made it a classroom project. Construction class, students went through, and we gave them the scenario. We're looking for a shelter out at the school forest on Rome, and we looked at a number of different aspects, some different sizes. Some of the students designed some one size, some others some different sizes. We looked at going into, well, do we build them with toilet facilities, without? We had discussions over that. I would bring back information from the meetings we have on this and relate that to the students. We changed things up as we went along, but it made for a good project because they had a client that they were working for. They were working for the district. They were working for the Town of Rome. They were working for that other group that would like to be part of this and donate some money. So, they had clients, and it makes a difference than what is just their project. Brought Sawyer Goodwin along with me. He's part of the class, and he would like to talk to you a little bit about his experience with that, show you a little bit about the program, and then we'll get back more into the information about what we have, what we want to present to you. So, Sawyer, it's all yours.
Well, I'm Sawyer Goodwin, and I am from the seventh hour construction one class. Myself and my five other classmates created the buildings that you see on the screen. This is one of the examples. It is a 30-foot-by-60-foot example of what you might see. Within this facility includes two restrooms, one for each gender, and a kitchen-like area. Would you like to see either of those in closer detail?
Absolutely.
So, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to hide the ceiling with the Hide Element feature, and I'm going to, ooh, go over it in a top view. Would you like to see the bathrooms or would you like to see the kitchen first?
Makes no difference. You just take us on a tour.
Yeah. Well, in that case, I'll show you the kitchen.
What kind of software is this that you're using?
This is the Revit system. It is kind of just this system used to create 3D structures and visual images of what your building would look like.
Very nice.
It's a great system to learn with, and in my opinion, I would recommend it. Within this area, you can see that there is a countertop, a sink, a refrigerator, and a roll-down system similar, similar to what you would see in a concession stand. It's simple. It's more cost-effective than putting a bunch of stuff that you can only use for half to three-quarters of the year in there, and it makes a great spot for conventions or local people to just hang out at. Within the men's area, there are four urinals and one wheelchair-accessible toilet station and two sinks. In creating these bathrooms, though, we had to use the national regulations for wheelchair-accessible use. There has to be a 60-inch radius within each of these for maneuverability. This is a rough draft of what it would look like. You can see, do you see the top left-hand corner of that top room? Right here. There would be a bar right here and right here to help the approach for anyone from a wheelchair. It is still accessible to anyone without a wheelchair, but it makes it much easier for anyone with one. The sink is elevated to a higher elevation to allow legs to slide under easily. And instead of a paper towel dispenser at a lower elevation, what you would find is, have you ever seen the, I believe it's a Dyson air dryer, and what you do is you stick your hands in, pull back out. It takes less time, and it's safer. Over here is the women's. You have the same sink setup. You have the same one-wheelchair-accessible area, and then you have four of them that are not. This is maximized for efficiency and space and allows maneuverability for anyone within it. Out here, you have an open-air area that can be used almost any time, and in this setup, it holds six picnic tables, and there is a backdrop so lessons can be done, and if needed, a projector can be used within this area. One of the ideas we had for closing this off for winter, because this is not an all-season right now, is you would use something similar to what we have over here. It would come in from the sides, and it would wrap around to this area right here, and it would close up.
Hold up one of the other ones to show. Just reduce yours, and there's another one that looks like that. Just reduce yours. Yeah, and then it's one of these. Yeah.
This is another one of the students' ideas. Here, we have an area where you can roll it up, and it's more like a door, and it's a more enclosed version of the building. Here, you can see the same setup with the picnic benches. There's a little more room in between, and the same backdrop to allow any sort of projection or teaching lesson that you want. It's less open to the elements and can be used in more conditions. Lights can be added on the inside in case rough weather provides and you still need to be out there to teach.
Spin around to the other side, and show them the other corner, the opposite corner that was there.
The back here is, you still have the two bathrooms at opposite ends, but here, you have a storage area for anything that you would need. This would have running water and electricity to any parts of the building that needs it, and this is where you would find those facilities. So, you would find water heater, stuff similar to that, and if you needed to store supplies in the back of the building to make it easier for workers, you would put it in there.
Spin around and show them the roll-up doors there.
Doors.
Right there.
This is the other concept, and it's easily shut, it's easily maintained, and it's available to anyone who has the key to it or any sort of.
One thing we found through discovery was, we talked about doing it like a barn door-type style setup, and what was shared was, information was, animals like to chew in on the bottoms and the sides to get in to that enclosed space when you slide those in and lock them in. So, one of the students said, oh, how about, I want to do a roll-up on these openings. So, on that one, he left a few of the doors out so we could see what it'd be like when the roll-up was up, and then you can see what it's like down for, you get later into the fall, you have a bunch of students out there, you can roll those down if you have some kind of heat source, whether it be some kind of propane heater or fireplace or something. You can warm the place up quickly, and you don't get that raw wind coming through and so on and that, and so extend the usability time into the later fall and earlier in the spring. Okay, so then, some other things to look at besides just the, slide over. Thanks, Sawyer. Besides just some of these different looks, for example, here we see one where a kitchen is off to the side, maybe a fireplace down at the end. Whoop. That took off on me. You know, a fireplace down on the end. Or here's a look at the one we were looking at with the roll-up doors, bathrooms, a kitchen area, some roll-up doors on here, so there would be a counter along here, much like at the community center, where you got that counter along there, people come along, can pick food up. So, when you have a group that rents the place for a picnic or something, you have easy dispensing of the food and so on. I know the Town of Rome would like to have another source down there where they can rent out areas. So, in agreement with the district and Town of Rome, that would be accessible for them to do and also bring money back into the maintenance and the running of that would be part of that. So, there's some different looks. There's a lot of different things that can be done. What we need to look at is, what's the feasibility of this and some kind of a timeline? So, if we, oh, I need to go here. So, if we look at kind of a, I gotta zoom this. Controls a lot, son. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay, if we were to put this in, the well, sewer, and electric, some estimated cost, this well being drilled, that is a firm cost, and he said, he's given the district a good deal on that. It's about as low as you can go on one. A sewer system, four to $7,000 to get that all put in there. Just about every contractor that I've talked to, and Brian, I don't know if you got the same talk, they were like, okay, it's for the school district, we'll give you a deal, you know, that type of stuff. So, we were getting some low numbers. I know Escavadian, he thought a thousand would be the tops, if that. And so, we see some numbers for each one of these phases, and they add up. Footings and flooring, that can vary quite a bit depending upon if we decide that, do we want to go with, besides just having cement walls for the bathroom area? Do we want to continue on and cement in for a kitchen area? Or do we want that as a second phase, and we come back later and we put some metal-stud walls up with some other type of exterior on that? So, that can adjust some of those costs, and so we look at it right away. It's like, yeah, what kind of monies would we have right away? You know, can we, do we say, yeah, we want to do a kitchen area right away? Or do we want to make that a Phase Two setup? So, those types of things need to be considered. Block wall, again, is $3,000 to $6,000, or, you know, that depends upon if we just go with the restrooms or if we expand and do a kitchen area right away. By doing a kitchen area right away, you now have the building ready to go by late summer into the fall for rental and so on. So, now we're starting to recoup some maintenance fees and costs that it's going to take us. Because the committee thought that it would be really advisable to have the toilets in there, that means we need to heat those unless we decide that at some point, we need to shut them down and set them up so they're really going to be drained come wintertime. So, those are some considerations that need to be made, because otherwise, heating it around, you know, I think Town of Rome, he said there's that one place where he has to do that. It's probably a 100 to 200 a month, depending upon the month, for heating. So, if we're going to go the route of designing it to be heated through the winter, we probably want to spend some money upfront to make sure it's well-insulated so those costs aren't nearly as high, you know, both inside and out around that area, and so that the heating for, again, just the toilet areas would be a minimum. So, it's those types of things we need to look at. The pole shelter, the materials for that, for the roof, and those things, 12 to 15, depending upon the size we go. As we made these and looked at how much we can do, we kept thinking, oh, bigger is definitely better, and, you know, we're looking at probably a 40 by 60 footprint of the shelter, you know, especially once you put usable toilets in there where you have a bus full of kids up there, you want to be able to have more than one at a time use your, each of the restrooms. So, that's going to take up a chunk off that one end. So, those types of things need to be looked at as when we make some decisions here as to what we can go with. So, you can see some of these costs here. I'll even zoom in some more. So, our concrete cost is going to be fairly high because when we're doing those block wall, we got to put footings down underneath those and so on, so that's going to be a big cost. So, we see those costs anywhere from 11 to 18, and again, this could be lower depending upon if we decide that the kitchen can wait to another phase, and we can just put wood or metal walls up in between the posts. The shelter itself, toilets and stalls, it's amazing how much, yeah, you know, because it's got to be durable, you know, so you're looking at probably stainless steel ones in there, but just dividers. Dividers costs on those things are expensive, and so, heating costs, doors, kitchens, area. This kitchen area, again, is one that, well, if we have a Phase Two of that, that can be put on hold to a later time, and if fundraising is done by the district and the other groups that are involved, that can come along as we go. These we discussed at our different meetings. Solar and wiring. A lot of this wiring can be done by students. On the side here, I also put down who's going to be doing the work. This column here is contractor, here's where contractors will work with students, and then student projects there, where we can do most of the work. And a lot of that wiring, we can do, we just need that certified electrician to sign off it and hook it up to the main panel for us, but that can be a great project for students out there. Midstate is willing to do some kind of solar installation, just like they've done installations with the couple of schools here already. So, there's a good partnership there, and again, when that comes about, can come about when we have the money for that. So, other things, fire pits and seating, maybe out further on the property. We have some areas where we have some seating and maybe some brick or stone seating with a fire feature, something that can be another student project that's done, and as well as trail markers and signage, thanks for that. So, all those can be ongoing projects over the next five, seven, 10 years, and more. So, that's what we have, and what we're hoping as a district, you think that this is worthy and can dedicate some funds to doing that. I know we had the sale of the lumber from the school forest. That's what we're here for. She doesn't like it when she has to put the money up.
But the next step is now to take this to the Town of Rome and share with their...
But the next step is now to take this to the Town of Rome and share with their board.
Yep.
So any questions that you perhaps have of this project?
I think it's a great project, but my question hasn't been answered about what the next steps are. So you're going to share the project with the Town of Rome and then what happens?
And they're going to give us some kind of commitment, some kind of financial commitment. And so then, once we know what their financial commitment is, and then, what's the name of the other group too that's...
Oh, I knew you were going to ask.
Right, you know?
I knew you were going to ask.
There's another environmental group down in Town of Rome, and they were thinking about doing something like this. They wanted to buy some land, they wanted to put some kind of sheltered trails and all this on their own. And then they found out that, "Oh, the school forest wants to do this, why don't we partner with them?" So they've been coming to our committee meetings, and so it's another revenue source. So then we want to get a commitment from them as to what kind. And once we have some full commitments, that's when we can decide whether, well, okay, in Phase One, we can, this is how much we can do. Go on to Phase Two and...
It's Central Wisconsin Nature Foundation.
Yes.
And I would actually recommend a presentation to them as well.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we did talk about that.
Yep.
And if we could be included with Town of Rome.
And they have some people in their organization that are willing to come out, you know, let us know when you have kids coming out there. We'll have a handful of people out there to be guides. Help point out different stuff.
Kind of friends of the forest.
Yep, friends of the forest, yep. And so it's something that they had a vision of doing. And now they can, they're like, "Oh, let's just partner with you."
Yeah, absolutely.
So they're on board.
Did I send you the information about AmeriCorps?
Yes.
Okay, did you get that, Dave?
I may have.
Okay.
Dave, a quick question. The footprints that you would be able to use as a classroom space right off the kitchen, that type of stuff, you mentioned a couple different times, you said forty by seventy or thirty by sixty, whatever. How many students could be accommodated in your current projections? Like, there's like six tables in the mock-up and those type of things. But how many students could, would you be able to fit into that area?
We want to try to get that area as big as possible. Some of these, you know, and that's one of the reasons why I said we keep bumping the size of this up is, you know, like on this one here, we're... We could turn these tables a little different direction and get another set in here. But this area here, right now, is about the size of the shelter over by the middle school. This area here. And John, you remember how many kids you can get under there?
You know, as soon as you said that, I started thinking, huh?
And so what your level of comfort is.
Yeah. Well, when we had some of those back-to-school luncheons out there, we had the whole staff under there.
That was a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Not everybody.
Not everyone, yeah.
So maybe fifty.
Yeah, so...
A busload.
Yeah, definitely. So but definitely want to, that's why, this is, this one here, I think, was thirty-four wide or thirty-six. And so by kicking that out to forty, we definitely can get more tables in there and make that area bigger. We can also squeeze everything on this side down further because now you have more distance this way.
Is there some rules about the number of bathrooms you have to have? Because every one of those stalls you add, you're now really compounding the cost.
Yes.
If you had two in each, wouldn't that be enough?
Probably. Probably, it's just for a project, it made them a little more...
Intricate.
Intricate, yeah. Yep.
More detail.
Yep. They had to do a little more squeezing and planning that way.
Yeah. Sawyer, what'd you think of the project?
What did I think of the project? I thought it was a really good, hands-on way to learn.
Fantastic. One thing I thought about, the Rome zoning ordinances, you know, if those need to be, anything needs to be addressed.
I have all those, so we're going to be looking at those here. Yep. He sent me all those, and so we're going to spend a few days just looking at some of those.
So I'll work with you and we'll get a date set up.
Okay.
So that we can go out there.
Yep.
I guess it's about time I get involved though, too, huh?
Sounds like...
A little comment you made.
We'll bring you a shovel.
Yeah. I'll dig for gold.
It's always nice when we can surprise Lynn.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Whipped her up.
Those are always the most memorable meetings.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Osterbrink or Sawyer? No?
In the Splashpad Planning Committee, I'm watching this, and we met and discussed this exact thing and how much it would cost for the company that we're going through.
Yeah.
And was brought up, do we, you know, are we fixated on going through them? And I'm sitting here watching this, why can't we bring this student-done-project to the Splashpad? So I'll get in touch with you and talk to you about that.
Sure.
Because I think that's the...
Only because we're going to do a building down there too, right?
This exact building, bathrooms, tables, shelter.
See what, see what happens, did he come out to his school by meeting?
I love it. You guys were able to design chart and just forgot.
Yeah.
Sawyer, you're welcome. Yep.
Thanks, Sawyer.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Nice job.
Yeah, really good job. Thanks for that money, thank you.
Okay, next on the...
You'll be okay, you'll be okay.
Next on the agenda, we have an update.
Okay.
From Central Wisconsin Southern Academy.
Sure, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
This last semester has been really exciting. We've had to play with the schedule a little bit, as everybody has this year, but we added electives at the end of the day, rotating electives. Mr. Osheski has been participating in that. One of the electives was a rotating chess elective. It's awesome. My son, who is the most unartistic, snob, techie I know, all of a sudden dove in to a photography project that I would have never expected. Some of these kids are finding some things right now that are going... They're finding that they have passions they didn't know about. And so I love this rotating elective that we're doing. I know going into next year, we have a lot... We, as a team, still have a lot of questions, and that's fair. But school-wise, I'm stoked. I'm so excited. Next week, I'm taking a kid, we're working with three PhDs out of three different states. We're going hunting for fossils. We identified necessary geographic... We found some pre-Cambrian sandstone strata. And if we have success, then we're going to bring out the whole school, see if we can continue it and then document the area. And these PhDs want to come visit the area, and it's on public land. So a little bit of partnership with Wood County, excited about that. I have another student working with a PhD, medical practitioner, a medical dive officer, retired Navy medical dive officer who now practices in Connecticut, studying the fact... I mean, we're all over. The live resources, the reaching out is really exciting, the connections we're making, not just with the community. We start here, and then we try to keep it in Wood County, and then we try to keep it in Wisconsin. And sometimes, I've got a student working with some professors out of California, Berkeley, right now studying how the mind processes magic tricks and why we're able to be fooled by them. We're a little all over, but it's exciting. But, so yeah, next year, we're trying to prep for that, but... You guys have any questions about what we're doing and what it looks like right now?
I'd like to add, I have a communications student, Hoyt Olson, who was a former student from that area. And he's into video and editing and taping. He's got himself a new rig that he's got this new camera in. He had it at the school, you can put it on your shoulder, you can hold it, just like the professionals have, mic on there. And but he's got a plan to where at, on Wednesdays, when we have early release from the high school, he's going over to work with the kids at the, over there, on video editing. And so this semester, at different times, he's come up, he went and got your drone that one time. Chuck had him come over, but it's like, "Hey, can I go get the drone?" "Sure, go ahead, go get it." And he brought it over, and so he was playing with it and getting it working and everything and figuring it out because he wanted to shoot some video that he could then take and you pick out a spot. Let's say it was a post somewhere. And then you can do video tracking with whatever you put on the screen. The words will just track with it as you go by. The words will start out here and it'll track right with it. And he was showing me all this editing he was doing, it's like, holy cow, you know?
Three D GPS.
Yes.
We were working on that, Hudson fixed the drone for Hoyt. Hudson's our tech guru.
Okay.
So he got the drone set up. Our iPads that we have available are really old, so you can't update any of the software. And so we had to uninstall everything, but we got it back. But the three D mapping is really cool. One of the electives right now is a video editing elective. And I mean, we're, I believe it's WiiU, or it's a Wii editing?
Something like that.
It's one of the... Wii Video, Wii Video, online. So it's a free program we're using. It's basic, but it allows you to really, to add audio into a video, a lot of cutting and pasting of both audio and video. And Hoyt is, I mean, that is Hoyt's thing. And he's, and then the other guy we have that's amazing at that is Josiah Melkey. And those two will probably be kind of heading up that committee as those programs increase and those students are producing more.
Thank you, guys, for sharing.
But the freedom of being able to, you know, "Hey, can I run over to the middle school to get this to do?" Yeah. Because he's that kind of kid, you don't have to worry about him. Yeah, all right.
Well, I wanted to...
All of a sudden he comes, "Hey, I'm back, okay."
I wanted to recognize Michael Wilson Jr. real quick. He's an eighth grader. And he, with permission from Terry and Clint, tapped the maple trees out in the knell and took sap from there and then took that, John let us kindly come to the elementary school. And so we brought the second graders out to where we were working. He went through all the steps from the very beginning, how to tap the tree, what he does, all of his equipment. And we actually used the outdoor classroom we built on the side of the hill. So we put all the second graders on the benches that we put down the tier last year. And then we went through those processes there, and then he brought sap to the elementary school, and he made syrup with them. And so that was really cool, and it was fun to work with those kids, and it was fun to watch one of our kids teach, so that was cool.
Fantastic. And I learned from his mother today that he, I mean, it's something the family doesn't do on a regular basis. So this was a brand-new thing that he learned.
That's what I do.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay. Emma, you are next on our agenda, so you're going to provide us with a little update of what's happening in the district.
All right. All right, so I guess I'll start, go back to March, end of March. We had our New York trip for the choir program, which was really successful. I felt like we really had a good time, but also just getting to see so many different things. And even getting our performances, we got to perform in some really different spaces. We were in this huge cathedral and having the, learning about kind of the different, the way that echoes differently, and singing in that space was really kind of unique. Then we had, FBLA and HOSA had conferences. So from FBLA, we have three national qualifiers. It was Nick Humphrey, Garrett Hoyer, and Elizabeth Henrickson. And then HOSA had one national qualifier, Nita James and Mrs. Cronin, also won State Advisor of the Year. Another thing, graduation committee, that's definitely moving forward. We actually got caps and gowns today, so that's kind of fun, and we have a lot of things planned out for sure. And then another big thing that we're working on, that's, it's kind of a student council mixed with just general school student voice initiative. And we actually just had a group meet with Mr. Johnson the other day to talk about how we can improve student voice in the school and really bring that together and make sure that students know that they can express their opinion and that they can be involved in things that maybe they didn't know they could be involved in, so.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, you are up. Last month, we started this little update from each board member about why we serve on the Board of Education. And Brian, you're going to tell us, you're going to give us...
I kind of wonder why my name was on the list. Why I serve? This is a question that was posed to us several months ago in another activity that we worked with. And mine was to give back and to give back to the people of this community and, you know, the gifts that, and the chances I had in life. I feel I have an obligation to give back to people. I had a very successful career. When I retired, I had, you know, I wasn't going to watch the grass trees, and I had several good friends suggest that I, you know, might want to consider the school board. And I thought about it at length, and I found it to be a good decision. And in fact, our stakeholders elected me to serve. And I finished two years now and I'm getting two...
Terms.
Two terms, beginning of my third shortly. I was re-elected, and I'm thankful for that. And again, it gives me a chance to give back, and I think that's something that we forget nowadays in our communities, is that we do have a responsibility to volunteer, to reach out and offer the gifts that God gave us, that we gained through experience from our life. I was a Hymn Resource Manager for a number of years. I went to school for Hymn Resources. And, you know, I did learn that I didn't know a whole lot about education real quick, though. You know, it's a different, it's a different ballgame here. I came in thinking I'd changed the world in five days, and, you know, it's six years and I'm still learning from the people around me. And that, to me, is a good thing. But, you know, I'm just glad to be able to be here, to be here today and help make informed decisions about our students. I have five kids, five, no, my kid, nieces, poor nieces, and a nephew in the school system right now. I enjoy getting to the school functions. I enjoy working with the children as much as possible. I enjoy working with the staff, getting to know the staff, getting to know what their days are like. And, you know, with that, hopefully be able to give back and make better informed decisions. That's why I serve on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you for serving.
The next part of our agenda has to do with communicating with the Board of Education, and that falls under Operational Expectation Policy Number Nine. And the first part of that, this agenda is administrative reports.
And we have, Mr. Rogers is just going to give an update on a committee that he's been working with at the middle school.
On Monday, we had our second Behavior Review, Behavior Plan Review and Revision Committee meeting, and that was from eleven-thirty to three at the middle school. We had representatives from parents, teachers, administration. We had a guest teacher there and a student and an administrative assistant that all were there and gave input. So at the first meeting, you know, we established our norms and focused on the current behavior plan and what was in there and what we needed to strike from that plan and what we needed to keep from that plan. And then this, just this last meeting, we really focused on identifying the concepts that we wanted to add to that plan. And so everybody got a sticky note, or had a sticky notes, and we wrote down one idea for a sticky note, and we organized them, and that's where we left off. So we had a lot of, some discussion around those concepts and ideas, and that's kind of where we are in forming our new Behavior Plan.
Thank you. Any questions?
No? Okay, thank you, Clint. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the District Professional Development Focus... Okay, the next item on the agenda is the district professional development focus areas for 2017, 18.
Yes, so, uh, in your packets, you have a, every April, this is slated to come forward. So as the administrative team is planning for next school year, these are the focus areas that are coming to light right now. And certainly the buildings now will take these, uh, focus areas back to their planning teams and work to really make sense of those at each of the buildings. So what, what I did was, uh, we, we met as an admin team and we developed the focal areas. There's three of them. Instructional strategies, social, emotional slash student behavior, and equity, equity, inclusionary practices. And then I mapped those out to the plan on a page, goals and the results, goals. So, and we'd certainly entertain any, uh, questions that you have. And one of the other pieces to that, as we, uh, work through the monitoring reports of the, uh, policy governance plan, we have a document that Diana has established that has all of the, uh, areas of concern. It's not the areas of concern, what's the-
It's exceptions.
Exceptions, those exceptions that we're documenting. So we're keeping track of those and really working at each of the buildings to, um, continue to grow in those areas. So that next year, when the, the, uh, governance policy, uh, the governance policy, each individual items, the operational expectations, when we monitor those next year, you know, we're going to be in more in line with, uh, policies.
Because as, as an administrative team, we'll be working on those exceptions throughout the year to get our procedures and processes in place to match the policy on.
Right. So these are the focus areas.
That's it, Mr. President. Heard you have a lot of questions.
Just, just one question. Um, I know of the year that we put so much money aside for, uh, professional development, so, uh, what, uh, what does that budget look like?
The professional development was actually created by Terry this past year where we developed or we, um, broke out the professional development by building. It used to be where it was all in one single pot and we really didn't have a big handle on it. Now each building knows exactly what they have for professional development and they keep a running total of it. Every month, they get a report from Skyward that lists out all the detail of how they spent their professional development and how much is remaining for the year. So, um, each building has their own pot for professional development.
So, um, as far as the monies that we have available then, is it sufficient to do what we want to do as our staff development for, for an annual basis?
Well, the building's probably saying no.
Wow, I was going to say.
We're not going to talk to people, we have more money.
I, I guess where I was going with that is, is it like a trickle down or a trickle up?
No.
Depending upon the federal government, really, because it's federal monies. It's Title II, it's set aside, and it's IDEA. There is, um, a portion of district funds, uh, that is just taken out, it's set aside at the district level and that is a very small portion compared to what all the federal grants are. So if the federal funds disappear, their PD budgets disappear as well.
Which is something that we need to be concerned about because it's, they're talking about that right now. So we need to work as a district to help inform our governing officials to leave that alone. But yes, we, we are, uh, I, I think we're doing well.
We're in a much better place this year than we have been in the past.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Your most welcome.
The next item on the agenda then is the winter sports survey results.
We have Mrs. Kowalski here for that.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Uh, after each the fall and winter sport seasons, I released a survey directly to students and then a similar survey to their parents, asking for feedback on how the seasons went. The surveys were broken down into several different focus areas. Uh, the sport participation level, grade level, feelings in the season, coaches, sportsmanship, practice, facilities, trainers, and then left, uh, the last question open to any comments for anyone to make. Some trends I found both in the fall and the winter and I'm suspecting again in the spring, it's just more communication, is wanted from the coaches to the parents in the form of, um, handbooks, parent meetings, and then, uh, one I'm finding kind of all over the place is coaching philosophy. So far more communication about how they intend to approach the season, how they intend to approach practices, skill development, playing time, sort of all those things that parents are particularly concerned about when it comes to their child participating in athletics. And then, um, a lot of upgrade and invest in the facilities. And that came out of the fall and winter and I'm sure it'll come again out of the spring. Surveys. Very few students and parents took advantage of the opportunity. Um, I was really surprised, about 20 parents, so, um, and then about 35 students, 127 students, if that's big. Um, but the surveys are also then used by me to help set goals with the coaches for the next year for any of the coaching staff that is returning. So I take the survey results, um, I break things out for the coaches and just say, you know, this was a concern, uh, let's plan on making a goal to address this next year and follow up on how you're going to do that before the season starts. So that, that are, those are the surveys going out and that's how I'm using them when they come back in.
How did you distribute the survey?
Google forms. So I, I created it in Google and then emailed it to participants and everyone else.
Thank you for doing that. That's, that's the other turnout is you'd hope to be better, especially from parents.
Yeah, more students participate in the survey and it goes to their school email, which I'm not always sure if that's on your guys' phones or not. It also went on on social media to say that it was waiting there for them, so.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Thank you very much. Next, we have a conversation around the Technical Excellence Scholarship.
This is the scholarship that, um, I would call the sister scholarship, but the Academic Excellence Scholarship, Technical Excellence Scholarship is awarded by a high school, um, through, with the state of Wisconsin, to a senior who has demonstrated a highest level of proficiency in technical education subjects. Recommendation is for this to be awarded to Zach Daniels when the applications become available. Neither application has become available at this time, so looking for board approval on that scholarship.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next part of our agenda, uh, we're going to look and walk through and monitor a few of the governance policies, uh, that we have. And the first one is, uh, policy, uh, operational expectation number 13, which is facilities. And Lynn, you're going to leave that for us?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, the, uh, the, the form was actually emailed to you about a couple weeks ago. So you had time to review it and then get back to me with any questions that you may have on it. I didn't receive any questions, so I'm just going to provide a summary of, uh, what I wrote and also the exceptions that I know, that I noted. Um, you may have more. Um, it consists of four parts. Uh, the first part is planned, that is a plan that prioritizes construction, renovation, and maintenance projects. And with, in that first part, there are five subparts. Uh, the first one is correct unsafe conditions, which we are already doing, maintain, maintenance costs, which we are already completing through budget, plans for and scheduled preventative maintenance, which we are already completing this through, um, purchasing preventative contracts with, uh, qualified vendors, plans for and schedule system replacements, we need to address that, and also disclose assumptions, including growth patterns, which we have to address in the plan as well. The second, uh, part is project lifecycle costs. Um, this should also be included for a replacement schedule for large equipment. The third part is facilities are safe and clean and maintained. We, uh, address this through, through our Public School Works program, uh, which is a work order system. It's one of the aspects of the, of the program where an individual can go into the, uh, website, web, web-based program and enter in a work order on any unsafe area that needs to be addressed, any cleaning issues or any maintenance issues. And the fourth part is the facility use. Um, I did have a conversation with Megan and, um, we do have an old process that we do need to update. So the exceptions that I've noted with this policy is that we need to develop that priority plan that incorporates all five of those subparts, safety, maintenance costs, preventative maintenance, system replacement, and assumptions, including growth patterns. So that plan needs to incorporate all five subparts. We also need to update the facility use agreement and the process. Those are the exceptions that I've noted in this policy.
Board members, you have any questions? Does anybody have, uh, any, uh, updates or corrections for the, uh, the writing of the policy? No updates? No corrections? Okay. And then the noted exceptions, according to Lynn, uh, if I'm correct, Lynn, is the, you mentioned the priority plan and the facilities guidelines and use agreement?
Yes.
Those are the two exceptions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, board members, um, we have two exceptions that were noted, uh, so we have two choices. Uh, I'm assuming, um, that someone is going to make a motion, uh, that we are in compliance with the noted exceptions unless somebody has, um, some other exception that they'd like to note? Board members?
I'm making a motion that we accept it, noting the exceptions as per, we find it in compliance, noting the exceptions as-
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? No? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you, Lynn. Board members, we have three, uh, governance process policies to review tonight. And the first one is, um, governance process policy number 11. It's, uh, board member violations. This is one that was, um, tabled until tonight because we didn't have, um, all board members here. The policy is called Board Member Violations and, um, I'm not going to read the whole policy, but essentially, uh, the policy statement, uh, reads as this, the, the Board and its members are committed to faithful compliance with the provisions of the Board's policies. Uh, and, uh, in the event of a member's willful or continuing violation of a policy, any board member may seek remedy by notifying the board president of the violations. The interpretation of this policy, uh, is to mean that the Board values the accountability of each individual board member. The Board shall be diligent in holding each other accountable or willful and/or continued violations of Board, uh, governance policy. Board members will monitor their own behavior and when necessary, individual board members will bring items of concern to the board president. A form was sent out. I don't know that, um, we received any feedback, did we? Okay, we didn't receive any feedback. So then, uh, for sake of understanding, um, whether we have violations or potential violations, I would just like to ask each board member, um, if they, um, uh, if they know of any violations or potential violations or would like to bring anything up right now concerning this policy. So, Mr. Mahan?
No.
Okay, so you know of no violations or potential violations. Mr. Ryszewski?
No.
Okay. Uh, I do not know of any violations or potential violations, uh, against this policy. Uh, Mr. Geezy?
I don't.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Okay. Okay, so there are no, uh, there are no, uh, violations or potential violations according to, uh, all five board members. Um, I read the interpretation and, uh, in part, you saw the policy. Are there any, uh, are there any updates, rewrites to the policy that need to be performed? Or are we going to, are you okay with the way the policy's written? Okay. Okay. Okay, then, um, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, accept that the, uh, the Board would find itself, uh, to be in full and complete compliance with this policy. Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
No.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. The next policy that we're going to look at tonight, gentlemen, is, um, Board Officers. It's, uh, Governance Policy Number Five. And, um, I am not going to read the whole policy. You had it in your board packet, but essentially, uh, this policy outlines the responsibilities for each board member, starting with the president, uh, and going through the vice president, uh, clerk, the treasury, a deputy clerk, uh, even the student representative to the Board. Did Emma get the, uh, copied on this policy?
I don't know. Would you like to read it?
What we're going to do is while Emma's reading this policy, and I, I want to apologize, Emma, you should have gotten a copy of this earlier so that you could at least read it. We're going to move on to, um, Governance Policy Number 12. That's the next on, on the agenda. Uh, and we want to give Emma a chance to read this policy, just so she understands it. But the, the next policy on the agenda is Governance Policy Number 12. And it is titled, Board Member Monitoring Responsibility. I won't read the entire policy, but I will read, um, part of the policy statement and the interpretation. The policy statement reads as follows, Board Members Need to be Held Accountable for Board Policies. Board District Administrator Relations Policies and Governance Process Policies will be the responsibility of the Board. The interpretation of this policy is as follows, Board Members are Responsible for Monitoring All Board and District Administrator Relations and Governance Process Policies. Any Potential Violations of These Policies Should be Brought to the Board's Attention at the Time of the Violation and Properly Reported at the Time of the Monitoring That Particular Policy. So in other words, if we find a violation at the time that we monitor the policy, that violation should be noted as an exception, uh, when we, when we review the policy. A Majority of the Board Mem, uh, Board May Call for Additional Monitoring of Policies As Necessary. Uh, the Monitoring Process, All Board Members, District Administrator and Administrators Were Contacted Via Email and/or Mail and Asked to Respond With Any Potential Violations. So at this time, I would like to ask, um, not only the board members, but the District Administrator and our, and our Board, our, our building administrators, if they know of any potential, uh, violations to this policy. So, Mr. Mahan? Mr. Ryszewski?
No.
Mr. Whitmore?
No.
I do not. Mr. Geezy? Mr. Schmidt? Nathan? Brian? Lynn? Keith?
No.
Clint?
No.
John? Okay. And Emma?
Yeah, she-
Do you know of any violations to this policy, Emma?
No.
We're going to catch you on the next one though, because we're going to come into that one now. Uh, I'm sorry, Brian. No, I, I-
I, I can give a motion if I can, if I can, to, 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 to,
The policy simply states the responsibilities for all board members, including the student representative on the board, which you are that representative. So the policy, I won't read, but essentially, it outlines the responsibilities of each board member. The interpretation is that each board member or officer has specific constitutional duties as well as board expectations. So that's the interpretation of the policy. And then I would like to just go around and ask every member of the board, including Emma, if they know of any violation or potential violation to this policy, as it is written. So, Mr. Mahan?
No.
Mr. Rushevsky? I do not. Mr. Geezy?
No.
Mr. Schmidt? And Emma?
No.
Okay. So, no one sees any violation to the policy. Does anybody see or have any corrections or updates, amendments that they need to, that would like to suggest toward this policy? In other words, do you like the way it's written, or do you have some, some updates you'd like to make to the policy? No one? Emma?
No.
No? Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion to, that the board would find itself in full compliance, full and complete compliance to policy G P Five, which is Board Officers Monitoring Report. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Emma.
So one thing, we do probably need to do a better job of that, getting that out. So I don't know, certainly the board has the packet a week before, but would it be helpful that, I mean, is it, as you go through it? And you're reading through the reports, or would you like them sent out to you individually, outside of the packet? Is it fine? Okay.
Yeah, it's fine the way it is. Right now, for those that don't know, the board receives an invitation to Google Docs. The agenda is in Google Docs, and so are all the, so are all the attachments to the agenda that provide further explanation, which includes all the monitoring reports and sometimes external reports that have to do with any number of the different topics that are on the agenda. So that's all one big packet out there in Google Docs. So anyone that's reading the agenda can simply click on a hot link and it goes to the, the attachment that that's referencing, so that's really how it's set up. So point of order, would Emma be receiving that attached, that packet, an adapted packet, or how would you want to proceed with that? I would think she could receive everything except for items that have to do with personnel, right? But otherwise, yes.
Thank you.
The next part of our agenda is the consent agenda. Does someone, the consent agenda consisted of several items this month. There was an out-of-state overnight trip that was referenced on the agenda, or two trips, I should say. There's a resignation, there's an employment, there are several donations which we will, we will read.
We want to talk about, yeah.
And then there were the board minutes for the March 21st regular meeting, the treasurer's report, and the check register. We will talk about the donations. Is there anything else in the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss?
And I do have a second resignation from someone who's been assigned to the director of the school.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Then, then I would like to, we do want to talk about the donations. Every month, the school district receives many donations from community members and business members. They're all greatly appreciated and really a fantastic way to support the school and the community. Mr. Whitmore received a letter this, this past week, and it's from Mrs. Ethel Furkey, and would you, would you mind reading it, Mr. Whitmore?
I'd be happy to. And then Keith will talk a little bit about the plans for using those dollars. So, Mr. Whitmore, the enclosed one-time gift of $30,000 is to be utilized by the music department of Nacusa High School for non-budgeted items. There is no restriction on what the money can be used for within the music department. My late husband, Dalton Furkey, and his first wife, Marjorie, had two sons who attended Nacusa High School in the late '60s and early '70s. Their names were Dennis and Gary Furkey. Both boys were active in music and enjoyed the school's music offerings. All four of these individuals have passed away, with my husband Dalton being the last one to pass on June, or in June of 2014. One of the designated gifting areas my late husband and I identified was Nacusa High School. I want to gift the money at this time because I am sure there are fiscal challenges that could potentially limit music offerings at the school. I am hopeful that this gift will assist in the continued development of musical gifts within our current high schoolers. Sincerely, Ethel M. Furkey. On behalf of Dalton Furkey family. So, so we, you want to talk just a little bit about them coming in this last week?
Yeah, so, I mean, this was a, I mean, a wonderful gift, and one of the things that we had been working on was trying to figure out how to get a new stage floor, because if you look at especially the back part of the stage, the area away, the vicinity, it was the front, but then behind that, it's very, it's in very rough shape. And so this fell out of the, out of the sky. Mr. Seiple and I had been putting our brains together to try and figure out how to come up with that money, and Lynn can attest to. And so this just came out of nowhere and-
He's very creative.
And it will be wonderful, and Bill Seiple has been working on getting quotes, and we're looking at, the $30,000 is going to cover the floor, the stage, and then any remaining funds would be divided up between vocal and instrumental music departments. And so it, yeah, it will be fantastic. We met with the family last Wednesday on the stage and showed it to them, and they seemed very pleased with the fact that it will be years to come that that gift will still be, yeah, given to the Nacusa community. So, and it's neat that it will be, although, I mean, obviously, the music department uses that stage floor probably more than anyone, but it really will be utilized and visible to people from throughout the community.
So Mrs. Furkey came in and her kids, and we went down there, showed her the floor, and, you know, they all agreed that that would be a great way to spend those dollars. And it's looking like around 20, 21, 22,000.
Right around 22, yeah.
So who, what are, how are you, what vendors for that?
Well, so, Mr. Seiple has contacted, well, we have one vendor that we have worked with for the gymnasium floors. He, that name actually had come up as he was looking at other possibilities as well, and so we've gotten a quote from them. And then he's reached out to other schools that have recently had auditorium and stage work done, and then some other companies that he had found through internet search, and so just kind of a ran, you know, just kind of bringing together all possible sources. You know, some of what we're running into is companies that, you know, some are saying it just isn't, we're not interested in it. Some are saying we're not able to do it anytime soon because we're booked out for a considerable amount of time. The one company, though, we did get a quote from, we have worked with in the past, and they've done well. So we're just looking at, the one thing we're looking at with them is just looking, okay, what stage floors have you done in the past? The other part, too, that's really been kind of interesting is that there are, and it makes sense, different flooring. So there are some floorings that if it's used for dance, that's an entirely different flooring, an entirely different line of work, versus if it's used for more multipurpose or production, theater production.
Might I meet with you afterwards and suggest another vendor? Well, we certainly thank the Furkey family for that generous donation to our music department, so thank you very much. We'd also like to recognize some other donations for this past month. Backpack for Kids, Sacred Heart Collections, $170. The Bethlehem Lutheran Church donated $45 and several boxes of food, and there was an anonymous donation of $20, all for the backpack for kids for this, from this last month. So we thank everyone for the generous donations. So I think we are at the part of the agenda where we talk about upcoming meetings. We do, the board does have a closed session.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry. I knew, I knew I was forgetting something. Something felt funny, but. So, yes, we're, we are looking for a motion to accept the generous donations.
Consent?
Yeah, the consent agenda, thank you.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And once again, we do thank everyone for those generous donations. Okay, now, let's try this. We do have some meetings set for May, a special meeting for May 9th. That's to prepare for the district administrator's evaluation, but then we have a regular board meeting on May 16th, and you see several items on the agenda for, for that meeting. Is there anything that needs to be addressed at the May meeting that's not on, on the agenda already, which includes the reorganization of the board, a staff presentation by Mr. Osterbrink and the tech ed students, a school nutrition program breakfast lunch prices, a preliminary budget for '17, '18, and a revised budget for school years 2016, '17, and then there are some internal monitoring reports. So is there anything that needs to be added to the agenda for the May, the May meeting?
Are we going to meet earlier to do the reorganization?
We're going to meet at 6 o'clock for the, for the reorganization, so that one, we always meet, yeah. And then the regular meeting will commence at 6:30.
Thanks for bringing that up, is that?
No one? No items? Okay, well, then with that, I'd like to thank everybody for their participation tonight. We greatly appreciate that.